Welcome to tonight's planning board meeting. Please be aware of the fire exit, which is to your left of the room. In the event of an emergency, please move in a calm and orderly fashion down the stairs and do not use the elevator. The meetings are recorded by the secretary for the purpose of a record and minutes, so please identify yourself each time you come to the podium and speak into the microphone. The board will follow the items in the order that they appear on the agenda, extra copies of which are near the door. After the case has been called, the applicant and/or his or her representative shall come before to the podium, identify him or herself, give his or her address, and then present their case. The planning board members will then have an opportunity to question the applicant. This case is a public hearing, it will be open for public input, at which time anyone wishing to speak to the board regarding this application will come to the podium, identify themselves along with their address, and direct any questions to the board. Once all public input has been completed, the applicant or site representative will be given the opportunity to respond to any public input. Once all public input has been completed and all questions have been satisfied, the case will be closed to public input and the board will then move on to a decision. No further input will be allowed at that point. Just as an introductory matter, I know probably some people read it in the Post perhaps, that the Legacy matter is on tonight's calendar, but it is not on the calendar. It is not being raised from the calendar, and we will not be discussing, and we have no new information, except for that which I'm going to introduce here shortly. We have received a letter, I don't know, I received it in my mail, from the Legacy, that's from the Huntington Hills Association, Michelle. I would like to have you get a copy of this and make it ready for distribution. Also, at last month's, or last two weeks ago, Richard Barone introduced some information, which I gave to Michelle for the purposes of distribution, and tonight we received some information, and I'm sorry to keep making you walk, but I'm going to hand this around, requesting that we are welcome to make a site walk. Just like to reiterate that the correct way of submitting information is through the town, so that it can be correctly and completely disseminated to the board, but I did receive those three items independently, as well as some of the members in the board. By having it go through the town, we can all ensure that everyone on the board has received the correct and complete information. At this point, I'd like Michelle to introduce the first case.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First item on the agenda is case number PB 1201-1. Upon the matter of request by Michael Lees for revised site plan approval, to revise parking, remove existing driveway on Empire Boulevard, and construct a new driveway on Warrington Street, subject to break-in access approval by New York State DOT, and to amend previously approved signage on premises 574 Empire Boulevard in an R1 residential district.
Hello, my name is Michael Lees. I'm here requesting a revision for the site plan that was passed by the board on May 23rd this summer. As Michelle had already stated, the revision includes two additional parking spots on the east side of the parking lot, one additional spot, reducing the rain garden by one parking space, the updated handicap ramp that has been installed, permits have already been pulled and cleared through the town, and the change of the commercial sign that will be in front of the building to in front of, moved to in front of the handicap ramp. Also requesting that the town of Arundic quite will be the lead agency for the break-in access to the west side of the lot, naming the Department of Transportation as an agency of interest.
Thank you. Just so everyone knows, technically we have approved his site plan as shown with some minor modifications at the first time Mr. Lees was before us. We encouraged him to find and gain access to the side street rather than the access that was currently existing of Empire Boulevard, and he did so, and we are very appreciative of that. I'm sure that's a very difficult effort to get that even considered by the DOT, and as such now we need to perform a coordinated review for the purposes of seeker, so we are taking his application in, and basically re-reviewing with some minor modifications and application that we previously approved, and in order for it to allow the DOT to go through the coordinator's process and provide comments, and subsequently, we believe that their approval to allow that curb cut. Does anyone from the board have any questions regarding this application? Seeing none, is there anyone from the public with which would like to speak with regards to this application?
Mr. Chairman, are we supposed to declare ourselves the lead agency for seeker?
Well, I believe we're going to move subsequent to the input from the public.
Oh, we do that, okay.
Seeing none, I will close the public input portion and take motions from the board.
I would like to make that motion, Mr. Chairman, to declare ourselves the lead agency for the seeker review.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Gunther absent.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to indicate to you again that, as I said at the planning workshop, I formerly had a professional relationship with Mr. Lees. I don't feel comfortable participating in that discussion or in the vote tonight.
Very good, thank you. At that point, it'll close that first hearing, unless Larry, you have something you want to add?
I'm just going to add for the board members, people in the audience, and people out there, that discussed this with DOT, and the easiest thing for them is for us to be lead agency, them to be an involved agency, and between now and your meeting in February 27th, they can then respond with a letter, at which point you can close the seeker process and act on, you know, act on the matter. So, that's what we're doing. Just makes this easiest for DOT, for us to be the lead and them to be an involved agency.
So, we don't have to take any more action tonight, then?
We do not.
That's correct.
All right.
Do we need to reiterate the vote on approval here, Pete?
No, just taking lead agency status at this point, then we're going to be having preliminary and final site plan approval in February, assuming the fact that we get DOT comments back before that.
Which they've also already essentially testably approved, that they really like this.
The truth be told, this is really a great improvement over the existing plan that we looked at. I mean, that Warrington Street exit rather than Empire Boulevard is certainly much preferred.
Thank you very much, appreciate your time and effort. Michelle, if you wouldn't introduce the next case, please?
Next item on the agenda is case number PB 1201-2. Upon the matter of request by Stepping Stones Learning Center for preliminary and final site plan approval, to modify existing traffic patterns within the site, including curbing, landscaping, and extension of an existing sidewalk on premises 2111 Hudson Avenue in a C commercial district.
Good evening, my name's Spencer Reed, I'm the current chairman for the board at Stepping Stones. Also here tonight is Mary Ellen Capini and Don Sutton from Stepping Stones as well. We are requesting on the northern edge of our property, along the border between our property and the Summit Federal Credit Union, to remove eight parking spaces, and infill those with curbing and landscaping to kind of break up the traffic pattern that currently exists, thank you, that currently exists, kind of running over towards the Wegmans lot, and also kind of give some visual break between our property, and then to close up a current curb cut, if you will, that is between the western edge of our property going into the Wegmans area to again cut down on that traffic that would be going in front of the school building.
I see you've addressed some of the comments that we had in the workshop, are you looking at one-way traffic basically in front of that, or two-way traffic in front of?
In front of the school?
Yeah.
Two-way.
Is that last?
There would be, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Northernmost driveway, basically, I suppose it's two-way, but your intention is to kind of take the buses and drop-offs down through the north?
Yep.
Cross the front of the building and then exit through the south?
Correct, yep. It would generally have a loop flow, although there would be enough room for two-way traffic.
Right. That is an extra wide driveway in front of there due to the pickups and drop-offs that were associated with Chase Pickens?
Correct.
Are there any other comments or questions from the board?
We talked a bit about the spaces along the most northern part.
Yeah, right. And in this revised sketch, they've eliminated those.
They've eliminated them?
Yep.
Yeah, what we discussed doing was eliminating the northernmost spots.
Okay.
And we were actually, Ms. Capini and I were talking about striping where those spots are today as bus queuing, which would then pull the buses completely out of the driveline if there were people on the other side and in the parking stalls on the other side of that, that kind of driveline there.
I mean, I guess I feel that what you propose is adequate, if you want to go beyond that, it's fine also.
This isn't necessary for this, but do you want to go over what you're doing here? You know, a lot of people know what Stepping Stones is, but that you're taking over a, I think I saw it on the news the other night, and I'm familiar with it, but if you want to just say a little bit about what you're doing?
Sure, absolutely.
And how you've grown and all that other stuff?
Yep, yep. We, you know, we are a school that primarily focuses on autistic children and special needs children. We're bursting at our seams where we're at today, just crammed in every little space we have, so we're looking at moving over to the Chase Pickens location, moving all of our classroom functions and clinic functions over there. It provides us approximately an additional 15,000 to 20,000 square feet, some of which we'll be utilizing right upon the move, and some additional classrooms and clinic spaces, and then we have some future functions that we're hoping to bring onboard in the near future, kind of phase in some additional functions.
Certainly is a wonderful reuse of, you know, of a vacant building, that's for sure.
Do you have any questions, Michael, anymore?
Just a comment, your proposed use even of the lumberyard as an enclosed playground, recreation areas, is, you just think about the uniqueness of the building and your utilization of it.
It actually catered quite nicely to a lot of our uses, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it allows us some covered play area, so that even in inclement weather, we'll be able to use the play area.
They should convert all old lumberstones to.
Well, we'll start with this one, we'll see how it goes.
Ray?
I still agree with, I still agree with Michael's comments, it was just great. Just for the record, Larry, could you read in the memo, could you go over the memo that you supplied us?
Sure.
So that everyone is.
Yes, and I apologize for any confusion, okay. I discussed this, we discussed this two weeks ago, and I discussed this today with Mary Ellen, about closing off the approximate 12 spaces on the north side of the driveline. You noted in my memo, which I just showed to Mary Ellen, that they appear to be 30-foot drivelines, so even if you don't do what you propose, someone backing out of one of those southern spaces has 18 feet of backing before they encroach on the 12-foot lane going in, and you could even stripe that lane, so it was very delineated which side you're supposed to be driving on. The other thing I showed was adding tree islands along the front of the building in the colored rendering, and that just gives us a nicer buffer along the front of the building. By state code, you only need five handicapped accessible spaces, obviously you're welcome to create as many as you like, but what I showed on this sketch was six centered on what I believe is going to be the entrance to the building. The Monroe County planning comments about Article 15 stream protection of waters, I don't think you're going to get anywhere as close to it.
Yeah, we'll stay away, and if we do have to go there, we'll, I'm sure we follow.
So, basically some landscaping and, you know, the way the buses are going to circulate or the drop-off loop's going to circulate, and I think that's a wrap. Are you okay with that, Mary Ellen?
Thank you, Larry.
Are you willing to, just out of curiosity, because Larry made a recommendation with the approximately six trees planted in that northern area, is that good with you?
Yeah, I don't think we have any issues with that whatsoever.
The trees that are colored and green are new, the other ones are existing using the aerial photography, so I tried to sawtooth those and kind of blush up that northern edge.
Yeah, I see no issue following that.
Super, great, thank you.
Rich, any questions before we open it up?
No questions, my only concern was the traffic flow, and I think it's been addressed very well.
Jay, anything additional?
All set.
At this time, we'd like to open it up to public input. Anyone wishing to speak in regards to this application, make do so. Seeing none, we'll close the public input portion. Any other questions, concerns, or comments from the board?
We need to do secret on this as well, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, we do. Well, let me start with that, if you don't mind. This is an unlisted action, and I move negative declaration.
I would second that.
Who seconded it?
I did.
Ray. The defensive end.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, seeker carries.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move approval of PB 1201-2 with the, with the added comments that Larry had made and that the applicants approved.
I would second that as well.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, motion carries five with one absent.
Thank you very much.
Again, I would like to reiterate, we really appreciate your investing in Arundic quite, we think this is an excellent use of this facility, appreciate your efforts, and wish you the greatest of success.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Michelle, if you would introduce the next case, please?
Next item on the agenda is case number PB 1201-3. Upon the matter of request by T Y Lynn International, acting as agent for Mike Nolan, I Square LLC, for subdivision approval and preliminary and final site plan approval, to redevelop properties bounded by Titus Avenue, Stranahan Park, and Grange Place. The proposal includes abandonment of Union Park and extension of Cooper Road to the south to intersect with Stranahan Park, redevelopment of area to include seven mixed-use two- and three-story buildings built in phases totaling plus or minus 87,200 square feet, shared parking, landscaping, common gathering place, and other related improvements on premises 633, 651, 667, 679, 687, and 691 Titus Avenue, 3, 4, 11, 12, 20, and 28 Union Park, 5 and 11 Stranahan Park, and tax account number 076.15-6-12, and 076.15-6-23, in a mixed-use commercial district.
Part-time job just introducing this case.
I'm tired already. Good evening, board, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Mike Nolan, my wife Wendy and I reside at 350 Kings Highway North. We're here tonight in hopes of receiving your approval for our site plan, road construction, and the construction of our first building. Last, for the benefit of maybe a couple people that have not heard about I Square yet, we'll do a brief update, if you will, how we got here, and what it's all about. Last March, I guess that'd be 10 months ago now, Wendy and I became involved in this wonderful project. At the beginning, we didn't really have any idea what we were starting, what we'd call it, and even what it was going to be. We just knew something had to be done with the area at Titus and Cooper. I loved the area, grew up right around there, and spent a lot of time as a child there, so it's meaningful. But we didn't have any idea either on how much other, how many other people cared about that area as much as we do, and how, we were truly enthused by how many people jumped onboard with us, and threw their ideas out there, and threw their support, and the town of Arundic quite has just been buzzing about this project since last July, and that buzz continues to be alive and well, and it's very, very exciting and very rewarding for Wendy and I to want to invest in our community when it's received the way this project has been. It's very exciting. Some of the goals of I Square, probably one of the biggest and most noticeable tenants of I Square, will be creating a four corners, the intersection of Cooper Road and Titus Avenue. It'll eliminate Union Park, which is a little bit of an awkward jog-street off the intersection and causes an unusual flow through that intersection. By developing a four corners, that gives us the two properties on the south boundary there, so if you're sitting in your car at the light on Cooper Road, waiting to turn either way on Titus Avenue, you're looking straight ahead. Currently, you're looking at the consignment connection, and down the road, you'll be looking at buildings on either side. You had two-story building on the right and a three-story building on the left, all new construction, brick, a lot of real intricate architecture and beautiful buildings. New buildings, all will have modern amenities and very interesting architecture in them. The crosswalks will be addressed, they've been quite unsafe and difficult to manipulate, especially considering the number of students that frequent and travel through that area each day after school. We're going to promote an atmosphere that is fun, safe, enjoyable for all ages, whether you're a teen, somewhere in the middle like myself, or an elderly person. We want something there to be for all of us, and so we can coexist together and enjoy the area together. We'll be incorporating an outdoor stage, the outdoor stage will be used both for musical events and theatrical events, and will be one of the big draws for the I Square area. I think it'll certainly attract a lot of people, and we have outdoor amphitheater-style seating for over 400 people. In addition to that, there'll be a movie screen above it, where we could do movies under the stars, Sunday afternoon football, or other outdoor events that require a Jumbotron style TV. In addition to all the goals we have for I Square, and probably our biggest one is a focus on education. Education, not in the traditional and booksmart sense, but more in the sense of learning life skills and educating our young adults in that to prepare themselves, and giving us all something to do and hobbies and interests to learn about. So, examples of that would be the restaurant having cooking classes, or the bakery having baking classes, the art gallery having learned paint or pottery classes, and we hope to have an after-school center in I Square that'll have organized games, crafts, events, things to do, homework assistance, and other things that would assist children in their schoolwork. We have an awesome green technologies program planned, what we expect I Square to be an example for others to follow in the future when developing an area and redeveloping, embracing the green technologies that are out there today, especially when it comes to waste management, water control, and alternative energy sources. It'll also be geared toward the future of electric vehicles and supporting them with charging stations right on-site. A lot of innovative things, a lot in the infrastructure will be planned for the future. I'm sure some of you have noticed, some of the houses and buildings have disappeared over the last few months in the area, as we're preparing for construction. We have four more demolitions planned over the next six to eight weeks, just in the inspection and process, and that all the buildings that are going to be vacated are already vacant, and we are proceeding with demolition plans, and that's right on track. The last one to move out was the consignment connection, they just moved out last weekend and relocated over on Hudson Avenue, right across the road from the old Dunkin' Donuts. And they were our last one to relocate, and now we're ready to roll, we just need your approval. Once the demolition's complete, we're going to get right into building the new road, we'll talk about that more in a few minutes, but, and we expect to begin construction on the first building this fall, as in seven or eight months down the road from now. The entire project's going to take us three to four years to build. We're very involved owners of this project and want to see it through each step. We're going to take our time and build it right, and do everything we can to impress everybody as much as we have with our plans. I Square will have an element of business collaboration. Between all the tenants in there, we currently have eight business tenants in the area, and expect that to grow significantly, maybe 20 or 22. We expect to use common services and benefit from the savings and increased level of service you get from common services like snow plowing, refuse removable, removal, window cleaning, and other common services that we can group together and benefit from, but also in the marketing sense. When we, a lot of the features in I Square will be about drawing people into I Square in crowds. We're going to have a business meeting center where groups like the Rotary, Kiwanis, or PTA, or other groups can meet there in the evenings and use our space, and hopefully they'll patronize our tenants and businesses when they're leaving there. The stage will do the same thing, we expect to have an art gallery in I Square, and again for the same reason, they don't bring us a lot of rent, or maybe no rent at all in most of those cases, but they'll certainly bring people to the area, a reason to gather, a reason to get together with your friends and family, and a place to go without leaving the town of Arundic quite, which we are very much looking forward to. Since our last meeting with the planning board in November, we also attended a workshop a few weeks ago and received their feedback, your feedback, and we sincerely appreciate all the time, thoughtful comments you all made on our plans and the suggestions that were brought forth. We documented them during that meeting and went and addressed each issue one by one, and hopefully have come up with acceptable plans and to use so we can proceed with an approval tonight. Running down through that list, we addressed. Running down through that list, we addressed the parking lot lights, lighting in the parking lot rather than doing building-mounted, we reverted back to pole lights, which will, we feel will give us better coverage in all three of the parking areas. The twelve-foot sidewalk, wide sidewalk that was behind the Murph's Building or Building One, we used a portion, or about a third of that sidewalk, to include shrub beds and garden beds that will kind of block your view of the bumper of cars as you drive by and utilize about a third of that walking space. We've added shrub garden beds behind Buildings Number Two and Building Number Three, and again, reducing the amount of concrete and replacing it with something green. We added low-level lights around the stage grass seating area, the perimeter of that, they're going to have low-level, like, bollard height lights around that and create a safe, well-led atmosphere, but still pleasing to the eye. We've also added lights to the flagpoles, and we addressed the trees along Titus Avenue and the stage seating area, and we've added some of those into our plans so that we can green it up a little bit. We also spent a little time discussing the name of the new road, and I'll tell you guys a brief story here because I grew up in Verandecoy and frequented this area, and one of my very close friends, Randy Baker, growing up, huge music buff, and he and I spent a ton of time at the House of Guitars and around that area, and at the comic store and the arcade, and it was our hangout, and that was one of my favorite times of my life, with a lot of our buddies hanging out in this area, and that's why it means an awful lot and why we're doing what we're doing. But we both grew up, Randy got married, I got married, both had children, we managed to stay close. Later in life, Randy was diagnosed with leukemia in 2002, and he lost his battle and passed on very young, at the age of thirty-seven. Randy was very kind, gentle, giving, loving husband, father, friend. Randy's four children are here with me tonight, Jackie, Bobby, Abby. Would you guys stand up for a second? Emily? You guys are amazing children, and we're going to name the street after your father. It's going to be Baker Street in his name, and very, very proud of you guys. Thank you, guys, for coming out tonight. It means an awful lot to me. On behalf of Wendy, myself, our awesome team of professionals on with I Square, all of the residents of Verandecoy have so overwhelmingly supported this project, we would sincerely appreciate your approvals tonight on the things that we asked to get this historic project underway. Very much looking forward to it. Thank you.
Larry, maybe you could just bring us up to speed on your memo and the engineering issues that we're dealing with?
Yes. The project is going to involve approval of the subdivision, site plan, and other approvals as subject to the muck zoning, like the buildings. On the sanitary sewer, that is pretty straightforward in that they're connecting to an existing manhole at Cooper Titus, running south down the new road, and then intercepting the existing sanitary sewer, coming out of the apartments down on Stranahan. And that sewer will have laterals that go to all the new buildings, and I believe one lateral will probably go all the way west over to one of the buildings in the House of Guitars complex. In order for them to move forward, you need to at least grant a preliminary approval for the sanitary sewer, and that approval, then they can go to Mono County Health Department and work through that review process. That approval would be subject to Mono County Health Department, Development Services, and DPW, and Sewer Department, so they would be able to move forward with that. The next deepest utility is the water main, and that water main, you could also do a preliminary approval, and that would be subject to Mono County Health Department, Mono County Water Authority. Currently, the utility drawings don't show that main loop down to Stranahan. That should be looped to Stranahan because it feeds a hydrant at mid-block, and if for some reason a valve is closed at the northern end for maintenance, then that hydrant's out of commission and all the sprinklers feeding the new buildings. So I'm pretty certain that Mono County Water Authority would require a loop on that system, but that's coming from our department and the fire marshal. The next one is a subdivision approval, which basically is taking all the existing lots and putting them back into one piece, or I guess there's the west side of the existing Union Park and then the east side of the Union Park, and then creating the new lots. And I believe I've seen that it's three lots. Is that correct, Mike? Okay.
Three on each side.
Three on each side, so a total of six lots running on the new right-of-way of what I'll refer to Baker Street right now. That street name will be subject to approval of 911, so that's not really the planning board's call, it's 911's call, and I guess the town board. So the subdivision approval is another one that the board could grant a preliminary approval based on the input from the hearing later tonight. Then on the site plan, you've got, you could have a preliminary overall because basically you've got a, creating a four-way intersection subject to review and approval of Mono County DOT, and if you're comfortable, a final site plan for the area around Building Number One, which is the one that we've seen information on. And then I segregated this out between the site plan approval and the specific Cooper Road extension, Baker Street separately, but they're really tied together, and again, that goes back to what the intersection's going to be, the signals, and that really ties back into Mono County DOT. And Pat Meredith, our Commissioner of Highways, any other conditions that he might have on that? Are there any questions on that from the board?
Just the, finish your, and then we'll, if you would. Are you done? Do we have a subdivision map?
I think in our original submittal, we got a plat from Mike O'Neill, but I wouldn't, it's not a final plat.
I do not see a subdivision map in our documents.
We have a preliminary plat from O'Neill dated eleven-ten-eleven.
But that's an existing, there's no plat, there's no proposed property lines on that that I can see. Are there?
It is showing the east and west side of the new street along with...
Maybe you could tell me what drawing you're looking at? This shows one piece of property on east, one, two, three, four on the west. All right, well, we can get that resolved. Does anyone from the board have questions for the applicant or for Larry before we open it up to public input?
Mr. Nolan, I got a question for you. At the last meeting, you said you were going to meet with the other residents that are currently staying in this area. Have you had those meetings? Is there anything you could share?
Yep, that's the one I have. Because you said there was three over here, three over here. It's the very last drawing, it's getting to the...
To answer your question, yes, we've been in contact both with House of Guitars and Reliant Credit Union as far as they're really our only primary neighbors. House of Guitars, we got a couple details to work out with as far as the site entrance to the School of Music side, and Reliant Credit Union's a hundred percent on board.
And what about the residents to this side?
We have not finished that yet. On the, on Stranahan?
Right, from Ken down down the...
Yes, we have spoken with all of them. They're all well aware of what is going on, but we haven't done anything as far as acquiring the other properties or anything like that.
Bernie, are there other questions?
Well, I just got a general question. Everything in Larry's memo says preliminary, so if we do go forward and grant preliminary, does that mean if something comes up, it has to come back before the board, or if it's just...
Preliminary approval, if we so choose to give that, would be that there would be issues that need to be resolved before final can be granted. The nature of those, if there are any, then we would be determined tonight.
I'm not sure that answered my question. So if we give preliminary approval, and anything comes up and it's resolved, we don't ever see it again?
No, that's not true because we still need to give final.
You'd have to, if you granted a preliminary approval to any of the components, all of the components or one of the components, whatever had a preliminary approval would still require the matter to be returned to the planning board to have a vote on the final approval, so...
It's not an administrative task.
No, no. You have to go through it. And Bernie, why I separated out the way I did makes it easier to talk about each element, but for both the sanitary and the water main, Mono County Health Department is going to need, if you do grant preliminary and/or final for those tonight, they're going to need a copy of the minutes that show that the board did grant that before they're even going to look at this.
All right, do, I think we've ascertained that we do not have a correct subdivision map.
It appears that we do not have an updated plat.
And do we have a map showing the sewer and water lines that you want us to approve?
Yes.
Is it in our packet, or?
That would have been in the plan sets you received probably a month ago, dated twelve-twenty-three-eleven, drawing C dash three, utility plant.
But you're saying you want to extend the eight-inch water main down to the southernmost portion of Stranahan Park and looping it back to the east, to the west?
Well, there is an east-west water main on Stranahan. It's shown very faintly because it's existing. It says water main service per records, and up at mid-block on the new street, you see that the eight-inch main is capped and plugged.
Yep.
So you would be extending that main by scale about two-hundred-and-sixty feet.
And, sorry, I buried my notes. Have we received a more detailed site plan of Building One, or are we just going to use the one that we've seen here, the lighting plan and the...
We have not received anything since the workshop. What you, what you received today is lighting and lands, that shows additional lighting and landscape around that building?
What about the traffic analysis? I believe the county requested that?
Yes, we've not, we've not received that, and we've not received the updated plans for the intersection based on that analysis.
Is that, Mike, has that analysis been completed, or?
It's underway now. I assume that was separate from...
Yeah, I'm sorry, you have to, I believe.
That's, we assume that was unrelated to tonight's approvals because it's a Mono County intersection, only the work in the intersection on Titus is in question. The Cooper Road, the extension of Cooper Road, Baker Street is defined and I thought met the requirements that we needed to for a planning board.
Larry, we don't feel that the county's traffic study or traffic analysis, the traffic would affect the subdivision layouts?
The, the analysis will determine whether or not the street is one lane in, one lane out, or it's one lane in and two lanes out.
But it won't affect the property lines?
It should all be contained in the sixty-foot right-of-way.
Okay. All right.
And you could, you could grant that approval subject to Mono County DOT and Commissioner, Development Services, and Commissioner of Highways.
Okay. Michael, any questions for the applicant before we open it up?
No, may I comment?
Yes.
Comment. Thanks for the landscaping addition. I like the character of the plantings. I only question the, I don't question it, I guess, I'm concerned about the honey locust. They, they have a tendency to grow quite large. I'm wondering if, I'm just wondering if they would indeed, upon reaching mid-maturity, you know, fifteen years or so, create havoc with the street sidewalks, et cetera. The roots are relatively shallow, not to mention they're dastardly dirty.
We'll check it out. Thank you.
But Larry, help me.
Well, I noticed those, and I thought you might say something. But as you've said before, there are trees that are much worse. They are salt tolerant, they do throw a filtered light, and they can be pruned and maintained. So, you know, I guess I'd like, you know, I'm not surprised you said something, but I'm not sure if there's a better answer.
How about a Bradford pear? Not a flowering tree, it's a shade tree?
Yeah, it's a smaller tree, it's a flowering tree, and you could probably mix some in, but, and it's not a bad choice. I, I think I would also defer to Mike's landscape architect.
Yes.
And possibly Pat Meredith.
Okay, so let me just, let me just leave that as a...
I appreciate it.
As a thought.
Okay.
Thank you.
Ray.
Hi, Peter.
I'm assuming you're done, I'm sorry.
I'm done.
Apologize if you weren't.
Mike, I still question the twenty-six feet of sidewalk in between Building Seven and...
The parking lot. That's intentionally left open. That concern was discussed after the workshop. That's intentionally left like that because behind that building, when we do have events and so forth, that would be a cart service area or other things. We could use that area. We want a little plaza for modular things. There will, I'm sure there will be a lot of tables or chairs on that. We didn't draw them all in, they're moving things, but that will be not just a big slab of concrete. I see carts or service carts, soda cart, beer cart, that type of thing on that, sort of working off of that.
Okay. Another question.
Another question you had brought up originally, you talked about, and I don't know if this is even relevant or pertinent anymore, but you spoke about heated sidewalks and so forth. Where does that stand, just out of curiosity?
At this point, we are probably not going to, so we did not put them in the plans. It requires us to come back and Pat Meredith had a fair amount of reservation on it, although we would like it for simplicity and ease of keeping the sidewalk safe. At this point, they're out of the plans.
Okay, and I only ask because you had brought that up originally. Okay. Lastly, we have to, at some point, Larry, the abandonment of Union Street?
That's a town board.
If we were to make that, where, does that come into sub, excuse me, does that come into subdivision approval?
It would.
Before we do?
Tomorrow night, the town board will have a public hearing on the abandonment of Union Park. My understanding, their typical process is they called for the hearing last month. They will have the hearing this month and then they will act on it at their February meeting.
So if we were, if we were to make any motion, et cetera, that would have to be done, right? It would be based on their input or approval. Isn't that correct?
Basically, I mean, there's a bunch of balls in the air and things have to kind of take their time to settle out in the right spots.
Right. I just wanted to bring it up because you hadn't mentioned it in this, in your notes, so to speak?
Correct.
You don't move me forward? Okay, thank you.
Ray, I think I should probably chime in here. Many of the approvals that you're going to be asked to grant this evening, I'm already hearing that there might be some documents or some dated maps that are to be required. You can make approvals subject to conditions. So I think that.
I just wanted to know, in that particular case, I wanted to know where that comes in? Does it come into, it comes into subdivision approval, right?
I think it would.
Or does it come into?
It could be subdivision or site plan, frankly. To further answer your question, I guess with regard to that and the status, and I think Bernie, you alluded to it in your question too, and Mike talked about the fact that he had spoken with neighbors regarding the Union Park component and the House of Guitars specifically, and both the House of Guitars representatives, the town and Mike, we are close to having an agreement that would allow for the appropriate accessibility with regard to that Union Park. So I think that answers Peter's comment, that there's a number of balls in the air with regard to how this project is coming together through all the.
Thank you. Thanks, Mike.
Rich?
Just briefly, I like the addition of the lighting in the open space area. I just want a little clarification. When you say bollard lighting, are you talking about low bollard lighting?
Yeah, probably 36 to 40 inches tall range to something. So it creates a sense of space within that area, but also provides a low-level lighting down at our height.
Okay, thank you.
Larry, have we been provided any cut sheets on what the light fixtures look like, poles, heights, things like that?
No, I know last week they, they did determine it would be an LED light, but I haven't seen a cut sheet on that yet. So they did take our advisement, your advisement of the LED versus high-pressure sodium Merck vapors, or, excuse me, the high-pressure sodium Merck vapors going to an LED.
Okay.
Richard, do you have any other questions before we move on to Jay? Jay, questions before we open it up to public input?
Yeah, I just want to, I appreciate all the work you've put into this. There's a couple of housekeeping things. It looks like, I believe we need sign drawings and stamp drawings. We don't have those here.
Yes, and also, just so kind of everybody knows the amount of work that's been going into this over the past month through the middle of the holidays. Approximately two weeks ago, or my department went through the plans from TY Lin, which included the survey from Mike O'Neill, very detailed survey. And then compared those to our town DPW storm sewer records and then also brought in the Monroe County records from 20 years ago when they rebuilt Titus Avenue and compiled all those sewers on one database, so to speak. And then a week ago, Thursday before the big Friday storm, Pat's guys went out with a couple of big blue trucks, one in front and one in the back, so they could pop manholes going down Titus Avenue to confirm whether there was really a pipe going east or a pipe going west and how big it was. Got all that on a drawing last week and sent it over to TY Lin. So they're in the process of, I'll say, fine-tuning their drainage study and which way the water's going to go. So we haven't gotten that yet, but I am comfortable with the direction it's going. And one of the things that I said to Bob Kiefer is that we need to know where the water goes today and how much of it, so that in the future, people do not get excess or additional amounts of water in a flooded basement. So that information will be coming in. So there's been a lot of work done on both sides of the net to get to this point tonight.
Okay, the second thing I had was.
Jay, could you just bring your microphone a little closer to your face?
I'm usually not accused of being too quiet, so this is new to me. The lighting plan, I don't see on here where it shows the, I'm assuming that the flagpole's going to be lit and it doesn't show any kind of illumination around the light pole, so, or the flagpole, so.
Okay. It's printed on the site plan what it was, but it doesn't, it didn't get into the other page. There's like a last thing when we were going through all your comments from the workshop. I know it's, it should be on the site plan page shown in there as a note that will be up later.
It just shows flagpoles, it doesn't show anything else on, on here, I don't think. And, you know, we just got these today, so I haven't had a chance to read them very closely. I guess the third thing is, is that it was my understanding that for the, that wide sidewalk between Building 7 and the parking lot, that we were going to say that there's going to be a certain number of trees or plantings in that area, but they're, we were going to give you some flexibility on where they were going to be. So what I see is no plantings at all and no.
Right, nothing into the ground. It needs to, what we have there, we want to keep mobile or movable. So anything in there that would be, will be potted in there, potted greenery in there and it's therefore not shown on the site plan. But we did contemplate the trees, it just creates an issue with our, you know, with the function of that curbed area.
But I guess that, should the, should the, the fact that you're going to put some kind of, some kind of shrub, some kind of plantings in there be included in the, in the plans, I guess is the?
I just thought, because they were potted and not fixed, that that didn't belong in the site plan, just the same with the table and chairs and so forth. I'm not, you know, I'm not a site plan expert, so Jay, I just, I'm going by what I see.
Well, to some extent, the site plan is a sales device, a sales tool, so sometimes we need the eye wash, if you will. Jay, I think that we are not, we're, you know, we're going to really hone in on the specifics of Building 1, but I don't know that we're going to be given tacit approval to the rest of them, but I'm not, you know, that's still to be determined at this point.
Well, it's just a question. I actually want to hear from the, I've already heard from the public, I want to hear some more from my, I just like a couple of questions before we start it up.
Okay.
Thank you very much for your comments. At this time, we would like to open it up to input from the public. You may address the board in a.
Come on up. State your name and address for the record.
My name is Michael Yanega. I am a co-owner of Indulge Ice Cream located at 655 Titus Avenue. We have a planned opening coming up on April 1st and I have some questions and comments, you know, some concerns I'd like to address. We support Mike and his new beautiful town square that he's proposed. We just want to make sure that, you know, our existing business will, you know, be noted and considered. I have a couple of different questions. The first one is, I had spoken with Mike last summer and fall regarding our ice cream shop, which is almost completed at this point. He had told me that he intends to put another ice cream shop in his town square. And that does concern me because it's not a big space, there's not a big distance between his town square and 655 Titus Avenue. Me and my partner are concerned that the area won't be able to necessarily support two ice cream shops. So I wanted to see if he still plans on doing that and, you know, if so, what his plans are. The other question, concern I have is parking. There's not a lot of parking as it sits and from my understanding of the last site plan that I was shown, the amount of businesses that will be in the area will close to, if not likely, double. So number one, the access to the parking and where all the people are going to be able to park their cars and go. I guess I'm concerned there'll be a big traffic jam trying to get in and out because obviously with any new town square, it's a lot of excitement, a lot of people are going to be trying to get in that area. The, another concern I have is the last site plan or blueprint, I believe it's a concept drawing of the I-Square as it was proposed incorporates 653 to, well, 651 to 659 Titus Avenue, which is everything from the shoe shop to Sue Harrington's Hair Extraordinaire Hair Salon. He, as from my understanding, he owns the shoe shop, but he does not own 653 to 659 Titus Avenue, which is the Taylor, our new ice cream shop we're putting in, the Gold Depot and the Hair Extraordinaire. In the last plan that we were shown, he incorporates those buildings in his new design. And I just question how he can do that when he does not yet own them. So I would like to see an updated, you know, plan.
We just, we don't have any plan that shows incorporation of those parcels.
Oh, maybe I haven't seen the latest one. I know back in the summer that that was included in the plan.
Mike, they're, and the drawing that's submitted, they're depicted in here because they exist, they're shown, but they're not represented as being part of the project that we're, that the board is being asked.
Okay, I just wanted some clarification on that. And if there is an updated site plan, it's, another concern I have is the parking that's in front of the ice cream shop currently. How will the traffic flow coming out of that with the abandonment of Grange Place? That's just a concern I have and, you know, basically those are my concerns. Do you have any, John, or?
No, I have pretty much it.
Okay.
Excuse me, Grange Place is not being abandoned.
Union, okay. Pardon me then. I guess I got confused.
That's what you're here for.
Okay. You're welcome, thank you.
The site plan does sort of, into me, what's going, going on a bit on the front of your property would relate to the, I guess I would call a truncation of your parking and the access control.
Yeah, that's another thing I wanted to clarify.
Ingress and egress.
In the last site plan that I saw, the sidewalk was extended and there was off-street parking. I'm just wondering, because I've talked to Sue Harrington, who owns the Hair Salon and some other people, and I was told that they are not for that, being changed over. As far as having a parallel park on Titus Avenue, that's a very busy intersection and I do worry about the safety of my customers having a parallel park on Titus Avenue because there is a lot of accidents in that current entrance as it sits, as far as blind spots and so on.
It looks to me like there's some off-street parking. It doesn't indicate the number that's left of the asphalted area that you have in front. It looks like there's some sort of concrete island in the front, but.
Now, would our parking lot, as it's currently sits, can that be changed if the business owners of Sue Harrington and the House of Guitars, who also owns the Taylor and our ice cream shop, if they do not give their approval, can that be changed without their approval?
I would think that there's, it looks like to me, like, I don't know, legally, there's, the island is in the right-of-way, I don't know who's doing that work and this is, it looks to me like it's in the right-of-way.
The island in the right-of-way is going to be subject largely to the, it's a county roadway, so I think that's going to go be a DOT issue.
Just because, you know, the access and parking to our current businesses, you know, I feel like, you know, everything is, you know, I am for his plaza, you know, and I feel like there's a lot of hype and excitement. I just don't want to rush anything and, you know, have our current plaza be forgotten about and how our customers and parking is going to be accessed and shared in this. So those are my concerns.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
My name is Frank Sedoti. I'm an attorney and I represent the House of Guitars. And as I told you at the last meeting, we're not opposed to this, we're in favor of it and we wish Mike success in getting his preliminary approval. We have had discussions with Mike and I had hoped he had mentioned that they're not really resolved yet. And I have a serious issue and it's access to the Cooper Road extension. And I need public access to the Cooper Road extension and that's going to be a curb cut. It's going to be a public street. And I know we're asking for final approval on some of these things and we certainly aren't ready for final approval on, on the road when we don't show a curb cut there and we don't show access to my client's property. And I don't care what you do, you can approve everything you want, but I want you to bear in mind that this particular problem has to be solved. You can't close Union Park and take access from our property without giving us an alternate means. And the maps I've seen have been site plans, but the subdivision plan, which I just heard about tonight that's floating around, I would think a subdivision plan would have to show a curb cut and a public road that hasn't been mentioned up to this point. And tomorrow night, we've got the public hearing for the abandonment of Union Park without any, anything showing the access to my client's property. Throw that out. I don't want, I don't want to rain on anybody's parade and as I say, we're in favor of this, but it seems to me that far along the way, and we haven't really solved it.
Sedoti, could you clarify exactly where you want?
Pardon me?
Could you, could you clarify where you have discussed putting that curb cut that you mentioned?
Yes, I've sent, I've discussed it with Mike and he doesn't really have a problem with it. I've discussed it with Dan and it's great. In a spirit of cooperation, we're all, we're all very friendly and we're hugging and kissing, but when you guys make a final approval on something, it's going to be too late and I don't want to be sitting here holding the bag. We're talking about a curb cut, you know, we're not talking about a couple of trees and a couple of landposts. We're talking about a curb cut in the public street.
So you're, right now, I mean, the House of Guitars is served by a number of curb cuts off of Grange, off of Stranahan Park to the south and then to the east by?
We have a curb cut on Union Park.
Union Park.
Which we have a right, which we have a right to retain. And, and I don't, we haven't gotten into it and I don't want to get into it, but the town just can't arbitrarily take a, a public road and close it.
So let me just finish then. So you are asking for that portion, the eastern parking lot that I believe accesses, both the music school as well as the lower level of the. know, both the music school as well as the lower level of the CD area. So you're looking to, that parking lot is looking to be redeveloped in a cooperative fashion as part of this deal, and you would like a spur road or a stub road off of Cooper Road Extension or something extending into what?
To Cooper Road Extension, from Cooper Road Extension to our property line. I'm on a, I'm on a public highway right now.
So like a cross-access easement?
Yes. No, I don't want an easement.
So you want a dedicated roadway?
Yes.
Into, so you don't really want that parking lot redeveloped at all then on the east side? You just want it left as is? And just have a road, a stub road into that parking lot?
No, I, I, I'm not an engineer. I don't know how to draw a parking lot, and I don't know how to lay out a street, but there's room there, and you can sketch out various things, and as I would as a layman, and you can find 49 and a half feet from the Cooper Road Extension to the House of Guitars Lot Line. And that's, that's what we have, and that's what I want for my client.
So you would like both the redevelopment of the parking lot into a cooperative parking arrangement and a stub road, if I'm understanding you?
Well, you're getting into areas now, you're talking about a cooperative parking lot. The House of Guitars owns a, a parking lot right now in front of the store that fronts on a public highway.
Right.
That's our, that's our land.
I know, but it seems to me like you can't have both, or maybe you do want both. I don't, I'm just trying to understand what you want.
We want to retain our parking lot.
You don't want that to be touched or developed, redeveloped whatsoever?
I want access...
You want a roadway that accesses?
What my client wants is access from our parking lot to Cooper Road Extension on a public road. I don't know what's going to happen 10 or 15 years down the road and how things develop, but if we're on a public highway, I know that our, our property is protected.
I mean, to some extent, you have that now. If there was some sort of cross-access easement, I mean, to me, the parking lot's been developed and there is a roadway, but if you, that defines, a loop roadway that defines the parking way, but you want, I'm just trying to understand what you, you want, and it's very unclear to me.
Is it?
What you're looking for.
It is. It's difficult to see, look at this plan and try to figure out where you want.
Let me, let me jump in here. I'm looking at the, the site plan that shows, site plan C-1, and it shows this parking lot, and, and the drive lanes are shaded gray. And the drive lane between the parking bays is 24 feet. And then two-thirds the way into the parking lot is a heavy, heavy line, solid, two dots, solid two dots. That is the current property line of the House Guitars. That is there, that east line is the current right-of-way of Union Park.
Correct.
Now, Dick, you threw out 49.5, which is a three-rod road. A survey rod is 16 and a half feet, so three-rod road. A two-rod road is 33 feet wide. So doing a little surveying here, if that 24-foot-wide drive lane was made into a two-rod road 33 feet wide, you need to get the nine feet from someplace, and the first place I looked is the 26 feet on the back of Building 7, so now that 26 feet becomes a 17-foot dimension. But basically, if that gray area was made a something-rod road, 33-foot-wide road going into their, onto their property, then they do have a curb cut going out to Cooper Road Extension, and it basically is a wide drive lane through the parking lot. Is that somewhat of what you're talking about?
Yes, exactly.
Okay. So, you know, the other option, looking here, is down in front of Building 2, we've got a big stage performance area, and I suppose grabbing all nine feet from the 26 feet of Building 7, you could grab some from that big performance area, too.
Well, what's been discussed, Mike? What have you discussed at this point?
Well, I, this is, this is being discussed, I'm sorry, Mike, I'm just, I'm...
The other Mike, not you, Larry. Because we're led to believe you're all agreeable, right?
First off, the, I, I don't think this is an issue to debate tonight, and I wasn't going to go into it, I had to bring it up as a concern. I believe your approval for our site plan tonight should be subject to the town dedicating the road to I-Square. If that doesn't happen, it kind of takes away your approval anyway, and I think that's adequate for tonight. So I have to debate out all the points. The House Guitars was offered cross-access easement. For the neighborhood as a whole, that gives us the most parking spots and the most attractive traffic patterns that we can come up with, done by the experts. I'm not comfortable with the access road style, but we have, we are working on a few different ideas and potentially dedicating our whole parking lot to the town of Arundicote, which then gives them immediate access onto the road. I'm perfectly agreeable to it. I don't care who owns the parking lot, as long as it's open for all our tenants and clients. And I believe the House Guitars feels the same way, and I just, the town had some reservation in taking dedication to that, but I plan on pressing that issue with the town until they take dedication of that parking lot. That will solve all their issues, right?
It, it may, and, and I agree.
It does or it doesn't.
Why don't you direct your comments to the board?
Okay, sorry.
I agree with Mike. I don't think we should be debating this, this evening.
Right.
But the way the meeting progressed, we were looking at final approvals on a lot of these things, and, and I think this access for us is very important, and it seemed to have been overlooked. I just want you to be aware of what we need. And I'll, I'll go to the town board meeting tomorrow night, and, and I'll speak to it, and I'll speak to...
You should.
The abandonment of Union Park, but I don't, I, I don't think this board should be in the dark.
Right.
About that.
We appreciate it.
Because, because it affects your approvals.
Yep.
And you can approve Building 7 without, or building, whichever, which one, I guess.
Looking at one.
That could be approved. And it doesn't bother us, but I, I do want you to know our position, and I want to get it on the record.
We appreciate your input. Anything else? If not, we can open it up to the next person?
That's fine.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I said I wasn't going to do this, I was going to go home and watch my DVR at Syracuse game, but I'm still going to do it. So it sounds like this issue is easily resolved as a phase of construction to me. I mean, you can abandon Union but not shut it off until you construct Baker and connect that big dedicated parking. Is that not correct?
Well, Union was never going to be shut down until after Baker was opened anyway.
Right, so I guess I don't see the issue. You come in Baker, and you got this great big parking lot, which is in front of the School of Music, only it's far deeper because it now goes all the way through to Baker, and they have their access and you have your road. Isn't that what it is?
You make it sound pretty easy. Yes, you wish it was. The devil's always in the details, and there are...
I know.
Details that need to be dealt with that we are...
You don't need to, you don't need to dam up the Union curb and things like that till you get Baker done, and just make it a much bigger parking lot. So it goes right over the old plumbing and stuff like that, which is already cleared, right? Seems like it's more a construction timing issue than an ownership or do we agree issue. That's all, just a thought.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in regards to this application?
I'm John DiPujero. I live at 4559 St. Paul Boulevard. Mike, how's Mike? My concern is apartments, okay? All these buildings that he wants to put down. I just want to know if there's going to be any apartments, because I don't see, feel a need for apartments. You know, there's apartments in back of it, there's apartments in back of Arundicote Plaza, you got some on the side of Chase Pickens, you know. I feel as though we don't need more apartments in West Arundicote.
I believe the proposal does include apartments.
Excuse me?
More than that. Yes, it does.
It does?
Yeah.
Can't be built without apartments? Can't be built without apartments? Because, I mean, you got enough apartments, I don't understand the point. You got apartments right in back of where he wants it built, and you got apartments in back of Arundicote Plaza, and you got more vacancies than you do apartments. They're not all, they're all not all running.
To some extent, the mixed-use commercial district has been, which this is a part of, has been written to incorporate both the combination of commercial office and residential uses, so what Mike is proposing fits exactly the zoning district to which it's within. As to whether there's a market demand for it, to some extent, we don't legislate that. And if it's permitted under the zoning, and, you know, he feels that it could be successful, it's his right to build it as such, but certainly, this is a phased development, and the market will somewhat dictate the users within there. And, you know, the first building I don't believe in, well, I'm sorry, the first building, excuse me, does include a limited number of apartments, and if he proves successful, then he may or may not go ahead.
That's just it, then. Then you're talking more problems in my books. With apartments, you got problems.
I think you look, you know, Mike's looking to, you know, be a good landlord, and hopefully...
Oh, yeah, I understand, but Mike's, a landlord is different. I was a landlord once, too, okay? And that's why, right after that, my last property, I said I'd never run again, never, never own rental property again, okay? You can be a good landlord all you want, but don't, don't help tenants. You can have a pain in the ass for a tenant. No, but that was my main, my main concern is apartments, you know, I just can't see any more in the area.
Appreciate your input.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in regards to this application? Go ahead.
Just a comment also, real quickly, on the apartments. I believe as proposed, it's a three or four-story apartment structure. I'd like to know where all the residents are going to park without taking up all the parking for the businesses that are going to go in. Because I don't see anything designated for the residents that will be living there. Obviously, three stories will house, I don't know how many people, but they will need permanent parking.
Mr. Nolan can address that if he wants, but I believe that through the site plan, there's a cooperative parking easement around the property, that will be for residents and offices.
I, I understand that, but just given the number of businesses that will be brought in, I don't see, there's going to, I feel like there's going to be more businesses than there is parking for, and that's just a concern that I have.
I do think the concept with residential uses are that they leave during the day, businesses occupy parking spots during the day, and then they come back at night, and businesses tend to shut down at some at night, you know, offices and things.
Well, some, I mean, restaurants stay open later, and other eateries and cafes and whatnot tend to stay open to nine to 10:00. I just want to make sure that, you know, there'll be adequate parking for the businesses in that area, both the new businesses and the older businesses.
Right.
So that's just my concern.
Thank you. Let's let the rest of the public input, and then we'll let you come back up. Anyone else? So many people here. Come on up, you guys can speak, we're not...
Well, the whole crowd just left. I don't know if it was the cross-access easement discussion. I found that riveting myself, so.
My name is Diane Zachary. I live on Bellhurst Drive, and I'm here tonight on behalf of the hip organization. We're very happy to be here in support of the I-Square project and proposal. As our group of volunteers was reminded this last weekend as we were crossing Titus Avenue with ladders to take down the holiday decorations, it's just not comfortable being a pedestrian going east or west or north or south across Titus Avenue today, and we're confident and really looking forward to the construction and the redesign of this four corners intersection. We think it's going to not only actually be better, it's going to feel a lot better and more comfortable to be a pedestrian in that area. We believe that the document revisions that I saw just coming here to the landscape and lighting plans satisfy our requirements, and certainly the things that we think the design guidelines call for in terms of the site plan requirements for landscape, we're very comfortable with the stuff behind Building 7 being noted as planters and having some mobility. We've actually had quite a number of detailed conversations with Mr. Nolan in the last two months on a myriad of design details far beyond what's represented here in these documents, you know, specific to font sizes on building size and, on building signage, and the whole depth of the variety of trees that are coming in and out. And it makes us confident that when these plans are implemented, and the buildings and the streetscape is actually constructed, that the implementation of this is going to far exceed our expectations, and even those conditions within the design guidelines for the master plan. So we're happy to be here in support of this. We're also confident that this issue with the House of Guitars cross-access, which is important and certainly a condition of the Union Park abandonment, will be resolved and, you know, definitely should be a condition if you give the approval. I mean, that's important. We know the Nolans think it's important, we know the Shawbrooks think it's important, we're sure the town thinks it's important, but we're confident that's going to be worked out. With respect to the number of the balls in the air with the many other agencies involved in this, and all the construction details, we really appreciate your willingness to work on these things in parallel, and Larry for coordinating all these different agencies. I think it's kind of invisible to most people in our town, what goes on behind the scenes to get a road constructed and get the permissions from all the different groups that have ownership on it. So we appreciate your willingness to work in parallel with these things, and the Nolans' willingness to be patient as these final approvals transpire over the next month or two. So again, we're in support of any of the approvals that you can provide this evening and into next month as the other agencies come forward with their comments. And we're still looking forward to breaking ground this spring, so thank you.
Thanks, Diane.
Hi, my name is Mike DeVernelli. I live on St. Paul Boulevard, 4164 St. Paul. I love this plan. I've talked with Mike Nolan. I founded a transit advocacy group called Reconnect Rochester in 2010, and just so you know where I'm coming from, I think Arundicote has a great opportunity here to build something different. The concept of mixed use is really taking off across the country, and Arundicote has a chance to really attract a different type of tenant and different type of visitor, and really create something different and a model for the entire region. So I wouldn't want to see parking, I understand the concerns around parking. I wouldn't want to see that sort of unfold or unravel the great plans that we've got here. I'm sure creative solutions can be worked out possibly. It may be time for the town to take a broader approach and consider additional connections, pedestrian connections, bicycle paths, you know, more access for transit users, things like that, that would allow people to come to this spot without having to rely on getting there by, by car. I think it would be unfortunate if we started taking away from the pedestrian experience by adding additional parking spaces. Thanks.
Anyone else from the public that'd like to give some input regarding this matter? At this point, close the public hearing portion or public input portion, and open it back up to Mr. Nolan, who would perhaps like to address some of the things you might have heard?
Yeah, I think just a few of them. With regard to Mike, your questions from Indulge Ice Cream, there has been a ice cream cafe planned in I-Square since the very beginning, and I talked to Mike about that before he opened his up, that that was a very real possibility. We're not altering our plans at this point, but I'm sure we'll work together as good neighbors and competitors, or however that works out, and work together. Bigger concern with Indulge side of things is their parking. There's a number of businesses. I own two of the, about two of the four buildings along the strip, but if you go down the line, there's the shoe... But if you go down the line, there's the shoe store that's immediately next to House of Guitars. The Taylor and Indulge Ice Cream shares a building. Indulge Ice Cream and the Taylor's building has two parking spots for, for two businesses. So if the one, you know, if you have one employee in each business, you're sold out of parking. So I understand their concern, but it's really not my responsibility to provide parking for your employees and/or your customers. We will keep, all our parking will be common, open parking, as you've got vehicles parked on my land right now, the trailer, anyway. Oh, okay. And I don't mind. And we don't want to be like that. We don't want to be difficult. They've, same thing happens with Hair Extraordinaire. They have two parking spots for Cash for Gold, which is Mike's other business. Sorry, the Gold Depot. And Hair Extraordinaire, between the two businesses, they have two parking spots. They have eight hairdressers that work at Hair Extraordinaire, and Mike works at the Gold Store. And again, we're six spots short before their first customer shows up. So I do, I do get it. They rent at a space that doesn't have adequate parking, but I don't really see where that is a concern for this board. Certainly, we've been generous with our parking, so has House of Guitars. They own the building. He rents where he's building the thing. But for both of them to have concerns with our parking, it doesn't completely seem fair. If you compare the House of Guitars, if you compare any of the buildings that we don't have, we will have 150% of the parking per square foot of space that both House of Guitars or those other buildings have on their own. Kind of not my problem. I will be a very, very good neighbor, allow your people to park in our parking lot. But please, don't, don't, don't come up against our project because we're not going to provide enough parking for your employees or your customers. If you become, if it was part of I-Square, I'm on board.
It's, my concern isn't with our customers or my employees.
Well, where are they going to park, Mike?
Well, let's...
Well, the church that allows.
I don't think this is the venue for...
Sorry, all right. Anyway, the, that is my position. I take on it and I submit to the board that we have enough parking for I-Square, and I-Square is certainly ample if the other buildings or speak to your landlord as far as coming up with creative ways for additional parking spots. Again, I really don't view it as a negative thing on I-Square that we're not a, or should be viewed on that we're sharing our spots with them willingly. And certainly not a position to come up and gripe about. Speaking of Frank Sidoti and his concerns for the House of Guitars, we will bring those to a head. That'll be addressed before the Town Board, before we accept abandoning the road from the town. Those issues will be completely resolved. I gave Frank my word on that, that I'm not, no matter what happens, we would like to get final approval from you tonight, subject to that Town Board approval, subject to the Monroe County, subject to the other things we talked about that need to come together. And the subdivision is, was held up slightly because of that curb cut question, and that will be resolved. We have the curb cuts in place that we believe are appropriate for the lot. Apartments, there are, there are a fair amount of apartments in Arundecoyt. There is a high use of them. There's, there's a very, actually fairly low vacancy, especially when it comes to apartments that are slightly more upscale. There's a lot of seven or eight hundred dollar apartments out there. But if you want to step up, but don't want to commit to ownership or somebody that's going to be here on assignment for a year or two and like to rent and look for something upscale, we'd like to have something for him here in Arundecoyt.
My, real quick, I don't mean to butt in, but my concern isn't for...
Well, we, the public input is our...
Why, he addressed me, so can I?
No, with, with all due respect, I have, I have to take a position. We have closed the public hearing, and you did have an opportunity. I think your, your position has been heard.
That's more than fair.
Okay, thank you.
Apologize, but that's just kind of the...
Understandable.
I guess at this point, unless, does the board have any more questions with, of Mr. Nolan? If not, I'd like Mr. Nolan to stay. We may maybe take a five-minute break, and then we'll reconvene. Okay? At this point, I guess I would just like to open up to the board again to provide some individual comments as it relates to the site plan. Everyone's had a chance to compose their thoughts. I have a litany of comments that which I'm going to address, but I'd like to have everyone else pipe in first. I'd like to start with Bernie.
Just a general comment. I've never seen such a, in my short time on the board, a project that's had so much information. But yet, at some point, it seems like there's some key ingredients that are missing. And it's troublesome not to be able to just, you know, give an okay without those things being in place. So I'm going to refer to the rest of the board to ask, what are those things so that it can move forward in a positive manner? It's just very confusing as to, are they here or aren't they? And we've talked about this, so I think you're going to get into that a little bit. It's, it's just frustrating.
May I suggest that, that you start it, because you already have a list.
All right, I'll start.
And then the redundancy of what we might throw in might be adding on, expanding what you've got. Please. You okay with that?
Yes. First of all, I'd like to thank you for the work that you've put into this, and it's certainly come a long way. And this is an incredibly significant project for the town of Arundecoyt. And all that fluff is probably going to be followed by some bad news. But honestly, at this point, there are just too many... bad news. But honestly, at this point, there are just too many holes for much that we need to, and I's dots and T cross from us to make some progress moving forward. I mean, I was talking with Larry and the town attorney about some incremental approvals. And one of the key elements for any approval moving forward is to try to complete the secret process. And, you know, today at 2:30, I guess we were given a long form environmental assessment, which honestly, we just can't review here on the podium of the dais in front of an audience. It just needs to be worked out through a workshop. You know, long form or short form is a basic part of an application process. We just received it today. And I can't put this on the board to review this in public, you know, not, I mean, it's in public and no matter where we review it, but it generally is reviewed in a workshop atmosphere. And I was thinking, you know, maybe we could just do some incremental approval with the water or the sewers. But, you know, there's things that just aren't complete enough for us to do anything. And the key, one of the key elements is, you know, the seeker. And I would love to give you something to help you move forward. And the one thing I did want to, you know, there's going to be a few other items that I want to talk about. What, we are willing to have even special meetings in two weeks, whatever we need to do, you know, to get your project moving forward once the documentation is provided. But, you know, the things that I see is that we need to complete seeker, both the application process and the review process, whether it's short form or long form. I think long form is the correct way. And that's an involved process. The traffic study and the county review, the curb cut. We need plat maps showing the subdivisions. And I think the subdivisions are part and parcel to resolution of the connector properties not under ownership and their cross access easements. We need a detailed site plan of Building One. And one of the things of looking at Building One, I think that there's some opportunities for some additional plantings around that building. I know you don't want to give over, you know, Building Seven, what do you want to do with landscaping there? But I think we've asked in the past, even if it's temporary or movable or, you know, landscaping, that we really need that shown on the plans to show the intent and the concept of what you're looking to do. We talked about at one point having some plantings in the right of way on the south side of Building One. There's not any shown on the plans. I think that there's a potential for landscaping plantings in the 15-foot area behind on the eastern side of Building One. Maybe that's not appropriate for other reasons, but I don't really think we have documentation as to why. We need cut sheets to show what the lighting looks like, the type of the fixture, the height of the rod, the pole that it's mounted to, and what does that really look like. We need you to resolve the cross access easements with both the House of Guitars. And I do think that there is some potential for problems with the western part of Building Seven, the proximity to the existing buildings. If you don't, I know you wanted to buy those buildings. You don't own them. They're there. The parking lot's being truncated. We talked about them being, having a cooperative agreement with you, with the parking, but there's really no connector, pedestrian connector between their parking area, the fronts of their buildings and your parking in the back. And I, that alleyway between Buildings Seven and those existing buildings is very tight. And I don't know that that detail is worked out. And I know you're the master planner of this property. And I think that those type of details really need to be worked out. And I know you could say that you don't, they're kind of landlocked, but on the same token, and I understand that you could play hardball on that issue. But I think that it's a detail that needs to be worked out because if it's not worked out, it's just going to be a little dark alley between two buildings. It doesn't have any functionality that is just going to be negative to both you and them. And that's about it. And we need to get the documentation brought together because there's some holes in here that just aren't, and I know you're just like 90% of the way there in the engineering data that we really need in order to do our necessary due diligence. And we can't, I would love to be as liberal as possible, but we can't in this case. This needs to have the same level of documentation and supporting information that any application comes before us. And this is a very significant project. And we, I just can't let it go without the proper review and understanding. And I'm sure this is making you very upset. And it's not the information you wanted to hear. And it's really not the way we wanted to go. I thought that, you know, after that workshop, we had some definite direction that was given. And I just, the information is just not there at this point for us to go and move forward. And like I said, we were more than willing, I mean, I'm personally committed to giving any special meetings. I know the rest of the board, we meet with, at workshops, we can advertise and make it a special meeting in two weeks to try to move this forward. But at this point, I don't really know what we're going to be able to give you without having the documentation necessary. Yes. Seeker, traffic study, plat map, environmental, well, the environmental assess, site plan for Building One, showing the lighting, the light lighting, cut sheets for, and details for the property amenities, including the lighting and the resolution of the cross access agreements, and the connector roads to the properties not under ownership. And I will provide that in writing. Does anyone else, I know I'm probably the most unpopular man in Arundecoy right now, does anyone else want to step in?
I do.
No, we let you be up.
I want to say something. I want all of you here to understand something, please. I don't think there's a member up here or anyone in this, in this room who really doesn't like this. I think we like it much. But business is business. And, and I think, I think we who represent you have a duty to make sure that all of these things are right. Because it can get screwed up to a point where Mike, the ice cream guy, is real pissed off because this is not happening. Or Armand's coming in because he, he doesn't have a place to get into his place. I think we need those things ironed out before we round down the road of approvals for which we're not ready. I said enough.
Came around the horn to me and...
You know, Mike, I agree with everybody here. We definitely like the project in many ways. I completely agree with Chairman Weiner that there are too many holes right now in this particular thing in doing our due diligence. The other thing that I think everybody here on the board looks at very carefully are other businesses that will be affected, current or soon to be current businesses that may be affected by a given development. It would be somewhat unfair not to take proximity into consideration, really. And some of the questions that we've asked, this isn't something that we didn't somewhat address in great detail at the workshop. And that's kind of what we're looking for to move forward. I think the project is great in concept. We'd love to do it. And I will pledge to you and everybody here that, and I'm sure the rest of the fellows would too, that if you want to do a meeting in two weeks, we'd be glad to do that. Thanks.
Rich?
I just actually have a couple of, a couple of comments. One is regarding just some, some of the folks that if there's a, there's a really good ice cream place a couple of spots away from Ice Square, and there's a, a desire for, for Mike or somebody to put an ice cream spot in Ice Square, and they want to have the competition, then, then God bless them. I mean, if you've got a really good, there's, there's, what are they, six pizza parlors within, you know, certainly a nine iron from, from the middle of that. So, and they all seem to be doing all right. So the competition, a lot of times when you're clustered like that, it's actually better than, than not. With respect to apartments, there's, there's a whole bunch of vacant apartments in the city of Rochester. But if you go down to Buckingham Place or some of those others, one of the reasons that a lot of downtown is, is actually doing better and thriving is not because of the new businesses down there, it's because of the apartments and, and other things that have been put in down there. So, you know, apartments are, are really a good thing to actually, you have a built-in clientele and you've got a lot of, it's really a good thing, I think, to have mixed use like that. And as, as Mike said, the, there's, there's a lot of apartments in the area for $700 or $800 a month, but there aren't too many for, that are upscale. And I mean, I, you know, if I were, I don't even want to go...
Don't say it.
I don't even want to go with, with single and young or anything like that. But if I wanted to live down, you know, if, if you're living down in Park Avenue, then you're paying a good rent because you're, you've got a lot of amenities right in the area. And people are going to pay a good buck to, to live right above what this is going to be. So I think those are all good things. I think this is a great project. And I think everyone that has a, a project, whether it's big or small, and whether it's liked or not, would like to, to do so. And, and with as little, well, with the minimum amount of paperwork that they have, this, the, the amount of work that goes into these things, it's cost money and it costs time. So I don't fault Mike at all for, for wanting to do this with, with what's here. But on the other hand, we've, and it isn't a matter of, at all of trust. It's really a matter of that we have to verify for just about everything that, you know, we really have to verify everything that comes before us. That's what our job is. You know, there's another project going on down the road that people are wondering why it's taken us so long to verify what they think is painfully obvious. But just like every other project, we have to look at all the data and, and, and make an informed decision without, without bias. And as much as we all like it, we really can't go forward at this point, I think, is the point. So, thank you.
Do you have anything you'd like to add?
Want me to fill in the blanks?
Sure.
Again, I always say this when, when, when I marshal at the end some of the comments. And nothing I say by any of you should be interpreted as really having an opinion with regard to the approval or disapproval of anything that's before you. However, you're, what you're charged with, each of you touched a pen. And, and I think it's very important, Mr. Nolan, that, that we all have a meeting of the minds. And I know that you're, that you seem discouraged by the comments. But let me again reiterate, your site plan review, section 274A of the town law, says that you include things like parking, the means of access, the signage, the landscaping, the architectural features, the dimension and location of the buildings in regards to each other, an important component, the adjacent land use and protection of the adjacent land use, and the health, safety, and welfare of those land uses and the people who are going to use the site plan in this particular case. And, and when you read the cases that talk about section 274, the important component is that those, those criteria be reflected in the documentation that's part of the record that you rely upon. And I think that's probably the, the crux of what, what all of you talked about. So it's your decision. It sounds like, like you would prefer to have that documentation filled in, for lack of a better word. Now, I had heard, and we'd had some conversations, that you may be willing to expedite it because I've heard from all of you that this is probably the most important and exciting project that's been presented to all of you, and you want to get it done. You do have a workshop scheduled. That's the next time that you are publicly scheduled to meet together. And the public meeting law simply requires that when you meet to make a decision, if you should reach a decision at the next meeting, that we only have to notice it in the best practicable way prior to that meeting. So we certainly would have time to be in the official town publication before the next meeting. It was brought to my attention that those meetings, the workshops aren't ordinarily televised. That's not a requirement of public meeting law. So if...
But it could be.
It could be. And we could make arrangements if, if, if it's possible. But you, you clearly have it within your purview. If you're, if you, if you want to do it, all, the only thing I think you would need to do is have a motion to carry this matter forward for two weeks and that the appropriate publications be made. You could move and we could do everything in our conceivable power.
It'll, it'll be three weeks, the 13th.
Whenever the next, whenever the next workshop is.
Michelle, can you tell me, is that one of the days that we conflict with the zoning board?
No, the February 6th is the zoning board meeting.
Okay, good. So then we could have the meeting in this room and be televised and fully...
I would just have to double check the calendar, but I'm pretty sure that Mondays are cleared for this room for the boards.
Okay.
We can make, we can make a conversation. Just to clarify one thing, in, in, in the next meeting, I, without getting any, any other information, we will have time to have reviewed the, the long form secret, secret document. And, and the, the town will have input on that as well. And once we have secret, we can go through, I know at least some of the preliminary stuff. And I don't know if there's any final that we'd be able to do at that point, but at least that. And I don't know what else we'll, we'll have available by then. But if we're going to have other stuff available that we're going to want to vote on, we're going to need it at least some, you know, some time before that February 13th date.
I anticipate that we'll have the final plat. We will, we will have a public hearing tomorrow night at the town board regarding Union Park. So we'll have the results of that public hearing. I'm certain that we will have the traffic study and preliminary comments on that from Monroe County DOT. I am certain that we will also have the drainage study and the drainage report and the correct storm sewer layer. And so that really takes care of with the sewer and the water of the below ground utilities. And, you know, as you've all indicated, the four-way intersection and, you know, the relocation of Union Park, 85 feet to the east, everyone is in favor of. And then we'll have some more details on Building One. And it can pretty much be wrapped up.
So do we have to make, make a motion to table?
Carry, make a motion to carry the matter forward for, until that next day.
I'd like to make that motion to carry forward to, I believe, February 13th.
All right, hold on.
Well, if it's a motion, you either have to be certain or you can't believe it.
That's what I'm trying to say. You're saying it's February 13th, right?
Correct.
Okay.
I'll second that.
So, Mr. Attorney?
Yes.
So I'm understanding that I'm going to advertise this as a second
Correct.
...public hearing before the planning board on the 13th.
Your advertisement will be the same as the advertisement that you included for this evening's meeting. And what that advertisement will do based upon the motion, it will empower this board to vote on whatever applications have been made in, in that timeframe.
But the public hearing's been closed, so it doesn't have to be, it's not another public hearing. It's, it's in the, it's, it's a public meeting where we can, it's an additional planning board meeting is what it is.
To me, the first thing and foremost that we're going to be doing is resolving seeker.
Right.
Correct.
And at which point, depending on the documentation that we receive, we can make incremental approvals from that point forward.
Right.
I mean, we needed to complete seeker. If there's a plat map showing the site and subdivisions, that, you know, including any cross aspects easements and things that we want to resolve, we can approve that. If there's a sewer map, water map that shows the correct information, we can move forward to that. But first and foremost is to complete seeker. And see what we can move forward from there.
Okay.
It's all up to the applicant though to get the documentation that we need in a timely fashion for us to review it.
And this would be televised, Michelle? You're going to advise?
I will arrange it with Nate, yes.
Good.
Thank you.
And if whatever's not done then, can just carry forward to the meeting on the 27th then? Yeah, I feel I...
Who made the motion on that? I'm sorry.
I did.
Can I just ask a question?
I'll second if you need.
As if nothing was resolved tonight, and you're saying that you're going to take it out from it being a public...
You want me to ask it to you? No, it's still going to be, it's still going to be a public meeting.
Public meeting.
There just won't be a public hearing.
Public transportation. If, if, if it should occur that there are significant adjustments to the plan, the board can always reopen it to the public hearing. Public hearing is always at the discretion of a board in any event. You're welcome.
Do I have a second on that?
I second it.
Mr. Ritchie?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposeds?
Seeing none, the application will carry forward to the next meeting date. Are there, um, meeting minutes we want to?
Peter. Good decision.
All right, do we want to review a few meeting minutes before we can take off here? I know we got Michael now, so we can resolve some of those.
Oh, but Mark isn't here. We need Mark to confirm, to approve the June 27th meeting minutes. Gee, pers. I know.
Let's do it in two weeks.
Okay.
Three weeks.
I will need a motion to adjourn.
I make that motion, Mr. Chairman?
Do I have a second? All those in favor? Any opposeds? Seeing none? Meeting adjourned.